And I have seven o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Watzburg area school district where we are student centered and future focused for world-class education. Our work session of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty is now called to order. I would ask that any attendees or citizens wishing to address the board this evening, you may use the question and answer tool to submit your name and your address in the afforded five minutes to address the board. At this time, would you please rise for the to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a roll call, please, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Blazer.
Present.
Mrs. Farrell. Mrs. Lee. Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Pekovic.
Here.
Mrs. Pound.
Here.
Mr. Pushjack.
Here.
Dr. Pushjack.
Here, thank you for the roll call. At this time, I'd like to recognize Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Ken Berlin for school reports next week, Mr. Berlin.
Yeah, I also wanted to recognize that Attorney Kuhar is with us this evening as well. So we will have some school reports on the opening of school for next week. We're also going to have Mr. Teresowicz, the principal of Erie County Tech School, present some awards to two very special senior students. We'll be doing that next week during school reports. That's all I have, Dr. P.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin, and we certainly welcome Attorney Kuhar. Attorney Kuhar is the labor attorney for our school district. And I thank Mrs. Lee Nicole for setting up the recognition for our Votex students for next week. So thank you, Mrs. Lee.
You're welcome.
There are no citizens who have signed up to address the board this evening. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Chair recognizes Mr. Ken Berlin.
Okay, Mrs. Kelly, if you could let me share my screen. Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody where we're at, how we got into this situation of opening in a hybrid, and it was based off of guidance issued by the Department of Health and PDE, the governor's office. So the key metrics that we're looking at to get into the green where we can all come back to school is less than ten cases per hundred thousand and less than five percent positivity. So good news right now. Let me pull up another document. One moment. Okay, so hopefully you can see the state of Pennsylvania. This is the Department of Health dashboard that supplies us the statistics. Always using a seven-day look-back period. So right now, we have in Erie, a twelve-point-five incident rate per hundred thousand. And oops, sorry about that. And you can see that in the past seven days. We've had a one-point-nine percent positivity. So we're, one of the metrics, the positivity rate, we're pretty low right now, and we're kind of on the cusp with the other one. So I'll continue to keep an eye on this and update the board because we did say that we wanted to reevaluate going into a green or a full school situation near the end of the nine weeks. And I think we'll probably have to do that, make that decision at the October board meeting because right now, we've completely reorganized the schools to allow for maximum social distancing. We have K through six scattered among all three buildings, and we've dislocated, as a result, many other of the high school teachers that are working in offices right now to deliver remote instruction. So that transition will take a little planning. There's a couple of good places right in November where we could make that happen if the numbers are looking good. But I think two things we want to keep in mind. The cold weather is going to come. There's going to be more inside contact gathering of people. And then you're going to layer the flu on top of that. And then we may see spikes from the this holiday weekend start to show up, especially now that school's back in full swing. So it looks good right now, but we'll monitor that closely. So I just wanted to share where we're at with that. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Berlin regarding that plan for keeping an eye on things?
Andy, this is Tara. I don't know.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
I don't know if this pertains to this specifically, but since the seventh and twelfth graders are at home and they will be for a little while, do we have guidance resource for them for depression or anxiety? Because I know I've heard a couple of people speaking about, you know, they're having a bit of trouble. So I don't know if we have guidance counseling for that.
Yes, we do. So we have all of our full-time guidance counselors. Students and parents should feel free to contact them. We're still running our student assistance program, and that has a full-time counselor dedicated to it, which provides some entry-level private mental health counseling separate from the guidance counselors. And then from there, we have an onsite mental health clinic that runs in the evenings. I don't know the exact schedule off the top of my head, but we pair with stairways, I believe. And our SAP counselor helps hook up the students and the parents with that private provider, and then they take care of the insurance and paying for the sessions. So we have multiple avenues. They just need to contact us.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Thank you, Mr. Berlin, for your report. The chair recognizes Mrs. Vicki Bendig for the business administrator's report. Mrs. Bendig.
Thank you, Mr. President. For tonight, I have a couple of reports. The treasurer's report, cash in the bank as of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty is three million, nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Exhibit A one shows checks already written. These are checks written since the last board meeting through and including last Friday. Those checks total fifty-two thousand, six hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-nine thousand, forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. And then the checks that have been written on the cafeteria account, that totals five hundred sixty-nine thousand and seventy-two cents. I would also like to point out at this time, there has, there was some information that was sent out in an all-call and through email and on our Facebook page informing families that the USDA has approved waivers for us to allow to feed all of our students free of charge through the end of December, two thousand twenty, and possibly longer if funding continues. So all children, regardless of their eligibility status, will be able to eat breakfast and lunch for free in our buildings. And any student that is home, they have the ability to order and pick up lunches, bundle together, couple of days together, breakfast and lunch to pick up on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that information is on our website. So the more students that participate in the program, the more funding we receive for our cafeteria. Each meal that goes out the door, we're getting a per-meal funding back through this program. So it's important that everyone knows that and that they're encouraging their children to participate by eating breakfast and lunch at school. And that is the end of my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. And just to clarify, the cafeteria check's already written as five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents?
Yes, is that not what I said?
You said five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars and seventy-two cents?
I am sorry, it's five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
As presented on the agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. Are there any questions from the board for Mrs. Bendig regarding her report? Thank you, Mrs. Bendig, for your report. Anything on legal advisement for next week's agenda? The chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushjack for finance. Mr. Pushjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I have three items for the agenda for next week. F-one, we'll be asking the board to approve the monthly budgetary transfer from the budget versus actual report as outlined. F-two, we'll be asking the board to approve the transfer from the committed reserve fund, specifically the outdoor stadium complex renovation contingency to the capital project fund in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-two cents. And then finally, F-three, we'll be asking the board to approve the sponsor-to-sponsor agreement with the YMCA of Erie as outlined. And that is all I have at this time.
Three discussion or questions from the board for the three items under finance?
Dr. Pushjack, I have one.
Yes, Mrs. Lee.
So the sponsor-to-sponsor agreement, that's regarding the cafeteria purchases. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. The YMCA uses our cafeteria to provide lunches for their programs.
Right. How does the USDA announcement that all children eat free affect this agreement? Or does it not affect it at all?
I'll defer to Mrs. Bendig.
So if we have, we have to, we have to by PDE standards, have to have this agreement in place to provide meals to the YMCA. So however the funding works for that is outside of this agreement. This is just agreeing that we are going to provide the meals, and then they will pay us for those meals. But again, if there's funding for that, then that happens because they're their own sponsor. It's a little bit more complicated than that. This is just the agreement that says that we will, and we're entering into an agreement to provide meals to that program.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lee. Any other discussion for finance items? Hearing none, those three finance items will be on the agenda for next week. Thank you, Mr. Pushjack.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item, B-one, athletic change order, to approve change order number six for the athletic complex.
Mrs. Kelly, could you please pull that up? Mr. Berlin, would you mind a overview and reminding us these change orders?
Can you make that bigger, the first page, not the map? Okay, that's better, thanks. All right, so as we were getting to the end of this project, we were talking with Keystone about what the finished product would look like, and we realized that there's a couple odds and ends that would really make the stadium look finished that we didn't anticipate. So number one would be the driveway going up to the stadium. We think it'd be nice if we could finish that off, and it would match all the new black top that's in the stadium and flows up to the baseball fields. Not necessary, but we were recommending it. We want to replace the old baseball and softball dugout screens with black PVC coated fence, which would match the other new fence that we've put out there. And also, the last old fencing is the baseball third baseline. As you can remember, we did a change order earlier to address the backstops and improve them and get the whole field to line up correctly. So we're recommending that. Number four is showing as a zero. That's a mistake. I know that that's about fifteen hundred dollars or so, so we can get that fixed. But the last thing, number five, is drainage of the baseball and softball outfield. In the fall, there was discussion that, hey, you know, those fields are wet, and can anything be done about it? Well, we originally started looking into it with our own maintenance people. There was an attempt to put drainage out in that field years ago, and it doesn't really do much. So we decided that let's get a price from Keystone, as long as they're mobilized on site, and they have an engineer. So that's where this ninety-eight thousand dollars comes from. But Mr. Schultz and Mrs. Bendig and myself, we sat down with an engineer that designed this proposal, and he was quite honest. He goes, I don't want to overpromise and undersell. He said, you have three major issues in the outfield, okay? Number one, they're graded incorrectly, so the water does not cascade off of them the way they should. Number two, there's almost zero perk out there, meaning the water doesn't flow down through the top layers of clay, which that's just the soil that we have on our wetland campus. And then the third issue, I'm forgetting one. Oh, there's a high-water table back in that area of the campus, especially in the spring. So I said, well, is this going to help March, April, and May when the field, you know, the snow melts and we have a lot of water laying, slush laying up there? He said, he said it won't really do much of anything. So I said, if we're doing this to improve baseball and softball season, is it going to help? He said, no. The only thing that would do that is really to turf the whole outfield at some point, which he said was possible, you know, because they have the large drainage system is almost complete, and he said it would be a matter of just tying into it. He goes, you could even, even if you wanted to try this, this current ninety-eight thousand dollar drainage plan with the infield turfs installed, he said, that's not a problem. You know, we can do that, it's low impact on the area. We can tie into the existing drainage system. So I said, if this was your project, would you do it? He said, absolutely not, as much as I'd like to sell you the work. He goes, I don't want you to be in a position where you think that you can fix this high-water table wetland area with poor soil with just a hundred thousand. He says, you really need to throw a lot more money at it to make it right. So that's kind of where we're at. But I wanted to investigate that because I know there was concerns. Now, we did talk to the coaches. We got feedback from the softball and baseball coaches, and they said that a game has never been canceled because of the outfield. It's always because of the poor infield conditions. So some suggestions from the coaches were aerate the field, keep the grass shorter in the spring. And there is a low spot that we might be able to fix. I think it's on the left side of the baseball field in the outfield. So the bottom line is, is what we're doing is going to be a massive improvement. I don't think putting another hundred thousand dollars towards that is financially prudent, but I wanted to give you the option. So I guess from there, we could open it up for discussion.
Sure, let's have discussion among the board. It sounds like there's a recommendation to approve the first four items, the change order, and not the fifth, but let's discuss that.
Mr. President, it's Josh.
Yes, Mr. Paris.
Yeah, I think it's amazing that the engineer was forthcoming with us, and I think we play out a season as, on the new turf infields. And if we have money left in the contingency, you know, maybe take that in ear market for turfing the outfield at a later date, kind of like what we did with the middle school renovation project.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Any other discussion or questions from the board?
Mr. President, this is Jeremy.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
I have a question about the process. So if at today's meeting, we sound like we're more inclined to approve the first four items and not the fifth, do we handle that as far as motioning to move it forward? Or do we just handle that as far as our vote next week?
Well, if I know what the consensus of the board is, you know, that you want to consider the first four but not the fifth, I can have Keystone generate a change order number six without the drainage system on it. And then that, it'd still be approving change order number six, but it'd be modified as per, you know, the discussion of the board tonight.
Well, just to give my two cents, I guess I agree with what Josh just said, and I appreciate that we got the input of the coaches, who should know the best how that affects their teams and their practices.
Thank you, Mr. Blazer. Mrs. Pound.
Or number four, what's the unstable material?
Also, that's a good question. So when they got into excavating the area where the turf is going to be laid down, they found some, they found some areas of earth that was non-compactable, so they had to replace that. We did a little bit of this similar with the football field. There were some small areas. So I think that's about fifteen hundred dollars, but it's something they have to do before they can laser level all the gravel and then lay turf.
Okay, and then I agree with Jeremy and Josh to not spend this ninety-eight thousand. The only other question I have on this is, how much do we actually have left in contingency?
So maybe Vicki, you could speak to that?
Yes, I was just getting, I was just trying to pull it up so that I could get an exact amount. So there is about a hundred thousand dollars left in the contingency. I have a motion to, on the agenda, the transfer from the committed reserve fund contingency for the project to move to the capital project fund for a hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-two cents. That's for the first four change orders that were already approved. And then with this one, that would take it down to about ninety-eight thousand dollars.
So we went over the allotted amount that we had set aside for the stadium build and had to go into the reserve? Am I not understanding that?
So the bond proceeds that were approved were about six thousand dollars less than the original project quote. And then there have been four change orders that have, and we set aside, remember, three hundred and ten thousand dollars for the contingency for the project, which they had recommended putting aside one person, or, you know, ten percent of the project for contingency. So up until now, we've spent about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars of that. So there's ninety-eight thousand dollars left.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Vicki, isn't some of that money we spent, didn't that go to bond interest?
Yes. There was bonding costs that were not part of the proceeds on top of that. There was forty-six thousand dollars of bonding costs that went on top of that project. So that's where the other fifty thousand dollars is. Forty-six thousand dollars for bonding costs. And then another hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in change orders, or a hundred and sixty-five thousand, which is reflected on the change orders to date on this form that you have up in front of you. And then this amount of change orders. Before this change order, there's ninety-eight thousand dollars left in the contingency.
Do they anticipate any other things that they're going to, I don't want to say dig up, but find that we need to fix or make better?
Well, just based on my last conversation with them last week and the engineer, I mean, we're coming down to it. They expect to be towards the end of September. So I, I mean, you can never say never, but, you know, with where they're at in the process, I mean, they're getting to the final stages. If there was something else they would have found, they would have brought it up to us. That's just my opinion at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. Mr. Berlin, are there any board members opposed to proceeding to next week's agenda by having the first four items on the change order with the request of Mr. Berlin to update that change order for next week? So the motion for next week will reflect the change order with the first four items and not item number five. Hearing no objections, we will proceed that way next week. And I thank the board for the discussion, and I thank Mr. Paris, our Buildings and Grounds chairperson. You know, Mr. Jeremy Blazer for Personnel. Mr. Blazer, are you able to see an agenda? Would you like me to take it?
I'm good, Mr. President. I have several items under Personnel for next week's meeting. P-one, Kelly substitute additions, to approve the additions of the Kelly Educational Staffing Substitute List as outlined. So moved.
We're just reviewing them for next week's agenda, so if there's no discussion, P-one will be on the, any questions for P-one? Hearing none, P-one will be on the agenda for next week. Proceed, Mr. Blazer.
Thank you. P-two, Service Personnel Substitute List, to approve the names outlined in the agenda.
Any discussion on P-two Service Personnel Substitute List? Hearing none, P-two will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
P-three, appointments, to approve the following appointments. Rebecca Hayner as long-term substitute elementary, and Jenna Wright as high school special education learning support teacher.
Any questions or discussion on the two appointments listed under P-three? Hearing none, those two items will be on the, or P-three for your consideration for next week.
P-four, tuition reimbursement, to approve the tuition reimbursements as outlined in the agenda.
Any questions or discussion on P-four tuition reimbursement? Hearing none, that will be on your agenda for next week's consideration.
P-five, conference requests, to approve the following conference requests as outlined in the agenda.
Any questions regarding the two conference requests as presented? Hearing none, P-five conference requests will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
P-six, resignations, to accept the following resignations as outlined in the agenda.
Any discussion or questions on the resignations under P-six?
Andy, this is Tara. I do have one question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
When we have resignations, I'm assuming that we backfill almost all of them? Or do we actually look at the work and see if there's any room for streamlining or reduction, like giving tasks or responsibilities to other people?
Good question. Mr. Berlin?
Yeah, we frequently do that. A lot of times, somebody will leave in a position like these aides, and we realize that, you know, the student need isn't there, so then we would not fill that position, we would just take it by attrition. So that does happen. Frequency, I couldn't give you a number off the top of my head, but I know that it does happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Thank you for your response, Mr. Berlin. So P-six will be on the agenda for your consideration next week.
P-seven, job description, to approve the student assistance program case manager job description as outlined.
Any questions or discussion on the job description listed as P-seven on your agenda? Any questions or discussion on the job description listed as P7 on your agenda? Hearing none, P7, Job Description, Job Description under P7 will be on your agenda for next week.
P8, The Cyber Academy MOA, to approve the Cyber Academy Memorandum of Understanding between Wattsburg Education Association and Wattsburg Area School District.
Due to this being an item of negotiations with the WEA, we will be discussing this in executive session upon adjournment of this meeting. So P8 will be on the agenda for next week, but discussion will take place in executive session due to this being an issue of negotiations.
P9, Leave Request, to approve the Family Medical Leave Absence as listed in the agenda.
Any questions or discussion on P9 Leave Request? Hearing none, all nine items as presented this week will be on the agenda for your consideration for next week. Thank you, Mr. Blazer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I will pinch hit for Mrs. Farrell. We have two items under policy. PL1 is to approve the second reading of Policy 338. And PL2 is to approve the first reading of the four policies as listed. Mr. Berlin, could you please just remind the board briefly of each item? You're on mute, Mr. Berlin.
Thank you. So in August, the, the federal government issued some sweeping changes to Title IX, which deals with sexual harassment and discrimination. And the, the rules apply to the regulations that govern students in public schools and also employees. So there, there's a long list of compliance things we need to do, and we've started into that process. For example, we started what's going to be a six-hour training today with the admin team on how to properly investigate and resolve Title IX sexual harassment or discrimination claims. So we're going to have another two-hour training tomorrow and another two-hour training. That's just one of the many things we have to do to comply with these new regulations. So that's it. The changes that I mean, made to these policies are all related to that, those federal regulations. So all these policies, 103, 104, 427, 428, they all make reference to harassment, discrimination and Title IX in some formats. So all of language was updated and the NOCS law.
Any discussion or questions regarding the policy updates? Hearing none, PL1 and PL2 will be on the agenda next week for the board's consideration. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Julie Pekovich for Curriculum. Mrs. Pekovich?
Thank you, Dr. Pushak. I have one item under curriculum tonight to be moved to next week's agenda. It's C1, An Updated District Phase School Reopening Health and Safety Plan. I was just wondering what had changed from the last time we looked at it, because it's like a 40-page, 48-page document. So wondering if you could just highlight any changes, please?
Really, really only one change. The, the board, you passed a policy on masks last month, including the fact that, you know, students could be subject to discipline if they don't wear them and comply with wearing them properly. So I contacted PDE and they, and I said, hey, we've got this change. And they said, no, you, you really need to, that needs to be reflected in your plan and you can resubmit it. So that language from our mask policy was inserted into the, the health and safety plan where the former mask language was. So that's the only change.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Any further discussion or questions on the updated Phase School Reopening Health and Safety Plan? Hearing none, C1 will be on the agenda next week for the board's consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Pekovich.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Pushak.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for Technology. Mrs. Pound?
Thanks, Andy. I don't have anything to report under technology, but I do have a question on seventh through 12th being at home. Have we surveyed the parents or the kids on how the technology is working to get a pulse on what they're seeing out in the world?
No, we, we haven't done that, but that's something we plan to do. Get all the tech issues squared away and get everyone running for a week or so. They have some, you know, some accurate feedback with, we have everyone's connectivity issues resolved.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for Transportation. Mrs. Lee?
Thank you, Dr. Postchak. I have four items for the agenda next week. The first one is T1, Discussion of a Non-Public Students Transportation During the Yellow Phase Reopening of School Plan.
Okay, we're going to discuss that one first. Mrs. Lee, if you don't mind, before we go on. Mr. Berlin, could you just set us up context with this and then remind us of pending legislation that may nullify this?
Right, so in talking with Attorney McClure, I wanted to get some clarification on when we have to transport non-public students and when we don't. So in a normal school year, if we provide transportation to our students in grades K-12, we have to do the same thing for all the non-public students that reside in our school district, but are educated in another school. For example, Mercy Prep or Pedro Prep or any of the other non-pubs. So that's, that's, that's in school law that we have to do that. And you have to do it to the extent that you transport your own students. So, you know, the question becomes right now, we have to transport seventh through 12th high school kids because we're not transporting our own seventh through 12th high school kids. Well, the answer has a couple of parts to it. The simple, the answer is no, we wouldn't have to transport those seven through 12 students. We're not transporting ours. But the law says to the extent that you do transport. So we are transporting tech school students, but there's no equivalent in non-public school world. So we wouldn't have to transport any students there. And then we have special ed students that we bring into the building on a limited basis, seven through 12, to accommodate their white IP and learning needs. So if there are a lot of students like that in non-public schools that we transport, we'd have to transport them as well. So we looked at the numbers, Durham looked at the numbers, and we run a few buses into Erie. It's a, it's around 104 students, about 60 high school kids, 40-some elementary kids. But the bottom line is if we don't transport those high school kids, those 60 students, we're still pulling the same number of buses out of the garage every day. Because the, the buses that transport the non-pub students, they begin their run by picking up our students throughout the community and the non-pub students throughout the community, which then come back to the campus, our kids offload, and those kids consolidate onto a handful of buses and then they go into Erie. So you're still going to have to run most, if not all, of those buses in the area because you have elementary kids on them. There's a 30-some kids there. And we're charged in our transportation contract by the number of bus runs that, and the type of bus that we run every day. So in this situation, once that bus is up, comes out of the barn, it's going to cost us the same amount to run it that day. It's probably about, I think it's around $360 a day now for a bus, regardless of mileage. So all the horses are coming out of the barn, they're going to run around, they're all going to come back, and you really could only save a little bit of mileage by running a couple buses, less miles into Erie. And that, the savings there would come solely out of fuel costs. But remember, we purchase all the fuel because we can do it tax-free and save our taxpayers' money. Where if, if Durham, Durham bought the fuel for us, they would charge us their rate plus taxes and fees in the state of Pennsylvania. So I, I really think the savings is minimal. So I, I don't know what the board wants to do with that, but I, I did want to investigate that and give you that information.
And is there an amendment for upcoming legislation that may nullify this discussion?
Yes, there is, there is a bill in the PA Assembly, and it looks like it's, it's going to come up for a vote here, which would mandate public schools to transport all non-public students regardless of, of the pandemic and their hybrid opening state, whatever that might be. So I, I think it's going to be a moot point, but that's something that we, we should be aware of.
Well, I appreciate your investigation, Mr. Berlin, and consulting with Attorney McClure to come up with this potential cost-saving measure, but it doesn't sound like the potential cost savings is, is very beneficial to the district. So I'll open it up to the board. Any discussion from the board members regarding this? And if the, the legis, the amendment passes that we have to transport them, then yeah, we'll have to transport them. Any other questions or discussion from the board?
Andy, this is Tara. I do have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound?
For, based on not so much financials, but the children of the non-public schools, how would they, do they have other transportation or are we their only transportation to school?
I would assume it would be same as our regular students.
Yeah, the, the riders that ride the non-pub, you know, are non-pub riders. It's a pretty consistent crew once the school year gets, gets going. Now, some of the older kids, they eventually get cars and then they start transporting themselves. It's, it's a pretty stable population and I, I would think their parents rely on that, you know, just like the rest of us do that, that have children in public school. That morning time is hectic and the, the bus arriving and taking care of that, for the transportation piece for you is, is big, especially in our community because we're so spread out.
Yeah, that was going to be my next comment, but okay, thank you.
So I don't anticipate an agenda item for this topic next week? Would that be correct? We wouldn't need to have an agenda item for this?
I think Chris has joined us on the meeting. I don't know if she, if she wanted to maybe let us know her thoughts.
Yeah, can you hear me okay, Ken?
Yes, Attorney McClure.
I, I do think, I do think that the superintendent should have some kind of a vote by the board as if, if the board is going to authorize transportation of non-public school students who would not otherwise be transported. Yes, I think that should be an agenda item and the board should approve that because what you're debating here is what, what you have to do and what you're allowed to do. And so as, as Mr. Berlin explained, you, you don't have to transport these children. But if you choose to do so, then yes, I think you should have an agenda item that, that would approve that.
Thank you, Attorney McClure. And most often times, parents who choose to send their students elsewhere still pay school taxes, and they have always said, since they still pay school taxes, they should still receive the services. That has been a comment that we have heard in the past regarding issues around our non-public school students. So I would be in favor of continuing providing the transportation. I would be in favor of providing the transportation.
If that's the consensus, then, you know, we can modify T1 to reflect that, that the board will motion to approve the board to transport non-public students during the yellow phase reopening.
Is there any objections from any board members regarding that? Okay, we will have that item on the agenda for next week, representing, reflecting our discussion that we had tonight. And again, thank you, Mr. Berlin, Attorney McClure, for your input on this. Mrs. Lee, please continue with T2.
Right, T2 for the agenda next week. It is a transportation agreement and is to approve the 2020 Transportation Agreement between the Erie County Office of Children and Youth and WASD as outlined.
Any question or discussions on the OCY Transportation Agreement? None, that will appear on the agenda for your consideration next week.
Okay, T3, the OCY Memorandum of Understanding for the agenda next week. It's to approve the Office of Children and Youth Memorandum of Understanding as outlined.
Any discussion on the OC, OU? Hearing, and that will be on the agenda for next week under T3.
All right, and the last one is T4 Durham Drivers, and it's going to be for the agenda to approve the addition of Christopher Evans and Brittany Skinner to the Durham Bus Driver List for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Any discussion or questions for the additional Durham Bus Drivers?
Andy, this is Tara. I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound?
So this says, specifically says addition to, so does that mean we have more work for these bus drivers to do? Or do people resign and this is a replacement?
It's my understanding that these are replacements. This, the complemented drivers is 25 because we have 25 routes, and we usually have two to three standby drivers that don't have routes for drivers that, that call off. And that's, that's in our Durham contract.
Should we change this verbiage then to approve the replacement and add them? It, it just looks like we're adding to the, the bus driver pool.
Our process is to approve additions to the bus driver pool, which is what we're doing. We're not approving any new routes. We're just approving more drivers for them to use as they need.
So do we approve the resignation of these drivers as well?
Dr. Pushak, if I could answer?
Mrs. Bendig, help us out.
So last, last month, if you remember, we approved the Durham Driver List for the 2021 school year. These two drivers are in addition to that list. So they are, we do not, they're not our employees, so we don't approve their resignations. They are Durham drivers, but it is the Pennsylvania Department of Education and Transportation Department's requirement that the board approve all drivers, and we are responsible as a district to keep all of their clearances and driver trainings and licenses on file here in the district office. They cannot be approved as an addition to the driver list until such time that we have all of those documents in our hands. So they were not approved at last month's list. We have their documents now. They're now being approved.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pound. Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. And thank you, Mrs. Lee, for the four items under Transportation that will be on the agenda for next week. The Chair recognizes Mr. Shawn Mattson for Athletic and Extracurricular. Mr. Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have five items to be approved for next week's agenda. The first one is AE1 Athletic Resignation to Accept the Resignation of Jason Patterson, the seventh grade girls' basketball coach effective August 26, 2020.
Any questions or discussions on AE1 Athletic Resignation? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for next week.
Okay. AE2 Athletic Appointments, to approve the following athletic appointments. Winter, Spring Coaches for the 2020, 21 school year as outlined. And Colton Hoffman as seventh grade girls' basketball coach for the 2020, 21 school year.
And just to remind the board that we usually do a winter-spring approval all at once, and then we do a fall-winter, or a fall approval all at once. This would be our winter-spring coaches. Any questions or discussions on athletic appointments?
Andy, this is Tara again.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
I'm doing all the talking today. For the seventh grade girls' basketball coach appointment, so the, the other person resigned, was this job posted for internal view and external, or is this Colton Hoffman, is he a teacher or something? Like it seems like it's quick, we, he resigned and we filled it.
That might be a Mr. Carter or Mr. Paris question if either one of them are on the call.
Can you guys hear me?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
Hi. From what I was told from Debbie Newfer, since Jason Patterson resigned during the season, I was able to appoint, or, you know, whatever, whatever you wanna call it, somebody, and then when the season's over, the position will get reopened. It's not a permanent placement. It's just someone to fill in since the season had already started.
Okay, but this says appointment of him as the 2020-2021 school year, so it looks like he's taking over for the whole season.
Correct. And then, once the season's over, they will open it.
Okay.
That's the language in the contract, just to clarify.
Yeah, Jason Patterson was going to be the coach, and he had started the season. He got a promotion at work, and then was no longer able to make the time, so.
And Colton Hoffman is who?
Sherry Hoffman's son.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other questions, discussion on AE2 Athletic Appointments?
Josh, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Paris.
All right, could we pull up that list, please? I didn't see each specific spring or winter sport listed. So, if there's a holdover coach from the previous year, are they not listed? Like, I believe middle school soccer is in the spring, and I didn't see a coach listed.
For boys or for girls?
Boys.
Jay Pekovic said he does not want to coach middle school boys' soccer next year, so that position will need to be opened.
But if you'll see, under Girls Soccer, Mr. Paris, at the bottom, it says, Girls Soccer, Second Assistant Junior High. We would anticipate the same for Boys Soccer, probably at the next meeting or whenever the posting process is done. Okay?
So, Andy, this is Julie. Should we add?
Yes, Mrs. Pekovic.
Should we add Jay's name on the resignation, so that that position can be opened?
Yeah, that would be the cleanest way to do it, if we had a resignation.
I would wait till Mr. Carter hears officially in writing from Coach Jay to make that happen. I would not want to put that on tonight without some official correspondence from the coach.
I'll have that conversation with Jay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any further discussion or questions on AE2 Athletic Appointments? Hearing none, AE2 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
Okay, AE3 Extracurricular Appointments to Approve Sherry Wunowski as team leader, grade one, for the 2020-2021 school year. Sorry if I messed up her name.
No problem. Any discussion or questions on the extracurricular appointment as listed below? Hearing none, AE3 will be on the agenda next week for your consideration.
All right, AE4 Game Help to Approve the Addition of Julie Pekovic to the Game Help List for the 2020-2021 school year.
Any discussion or questions regarding AE4 Game Help List?
Andy, this is Julie.
Yes, Mrs. Pekovic.
I know that that's a paid position when you get on there to help out at different games, but I do it as a volunteer, just if needed.
Thank you, Mrs. Pekovic, and that would be appropriate protocol. Mr. Berlin, I assume.
Yeah, she, as a board member, you can't be remunerated for doing work for the district.
Right, okay. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for your willingness to be a helper, Mrs. Pekovic. We appreciate that. Any further discussion on AE4? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week.
AE5 Volunteer List to Approve the Following Additions to the WASD Volunteer List as stated below.
Any discussion or questions on AE5 Volunteer List? Hearing none, AE5 will be on the agenda for next week. Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have nothing under Ms...
Andy, this is Julie. I have one question.
Mrs. Pekovic.
What would the volunteers do? What kind of work are they doing or volunteering for?
I think they just get approved, and on their application, it would say which building or which activity. I don't think we have that level of detail. All we have is by our approval, that means that they've submitted all of their appropriate clearances.
Yeah, when I look into the applications, it does vary a lot. Sometimes it's parents moving to the classroom. Sometimes it's somebody to read to students. It's just a variety of volunteer tasks. Sometimes they're volunteering their time to work with, you know, maybe the music boosters or with the sports boosters that have, you know, direct contact with kids.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, Mrs. Pekovic. We have nothing under miscellaneous for next week. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for the Erie County Technical School Report. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, for next week, I will have a short summary of the August 27 JOC meeting that I had attended, and as Mr. Berlin stated at the beginning of the meeting tonight, I was able to help put together recognition for two of our seniors that graduated last year that have in their honor for their present day. It'll be next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee, and again, appreciate your efforts to recognize our students who also attend Erie County Technical School. Similarly, I will have a short report next week for the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit. That brings us to Board Correspondence and Dialogue. I would like to announce that after the adjournment of this work session, the board will meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing a negotiations matter involving the WEA regarding the cyber MOA and the FF-CRA paid leave. At the conclusion of the executive session, no further business will be conducted. At this time, we'll continue with Board Correspondence and Dialogue. Anything from the board this evening?
It's Josh. I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Paris.
As we get ready to open the field up for football and soccer in October, are we going to give guidance on the 250 people that could possibly come to the game? I believe that Governor did open sports to spectators at specific levels.
Josh, if I can speak to that, Dr. Pushcheck.
Been a lot of developments just today with that.
Yes, Attorney McClure, please, help us out.
Yeah, there was a shot heard around the Commonwealth this morning. A district judge in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania ruled in a case called Butler, being Butler County versus Wolf, being Governor Wolf, that the, there were two issues before him, but the one it impacts, Mr. Paris's question, is the judge ruled that the the order that limits us to 250 people outdoors, 25 people indoors, is unconstitutional because it infringes on the constitutional right to assembly. We're not advising our clients at this point to to change anything right now or to throw open the stadium for this coming weekend. Fully expect the Wolf Administration to appeal that, go racing in probably for some kind of injunctive action. His case was a declaratory judgment only. It didn't specifically give relief. It simply said that his actions in that respect were unconstitutional. So, you're gonna be hearing about that on the news. You'll be seeing it in the newspaper. We are on top of it, and we'll keep you apprised as to any changes that we think would be allowable. Of course, it would be up to the board to do that, but we'll let you know as this progresses. But we just saw the opinion today, and it's 66 pages long, and I'll guarantee there'll be an appeal filed tomorrow.
Thank you, Mrs. McClure.
Yep.
Mr. Paris, anything further?
Yeah, like, we're getting guidance from other school districts on, you know, how we can watch our kids at other schools. So, and this was even with the recommendations from the governor in place. So, I'm just curious if we're making any plans, I guess, regardless of today's verdict.
Yeah, I know that Mr. Carter and Mr. Miller were working on a plan and trying to figure out, you know, how many spectators could attend which events. And then, we were gonna look into how to distribute tickets to spectators in an equitable manner. But like Attorney McClure said, this ruling today may have ramifications even on how we distribute tickets. So, we're kind of gonna wait and see at the moment.
Okay, I just know there's going to be a lot of interest to see the new field once our first, you know, football or boys' or girls' soccer game is at home, so.
Yeah, well, absolutely. And I mean, I'm hoping that we can get as many people in there as we can, hopefully.
Thank you, Attorney McClure. Thank you, Mr. Berlin.
I have a question, Andy. This is Julie.
Yes, Mrs. Pekovic.
I just wanna know, is it legal for another school district to tell us that we're not allowed to come in? Like, soccer started, so we're getting emails from other districts saying, yes, you can come in. Other schools are saying absolutely nobody. So, there's no consistency. Does anybody have any information, like legally, are they allowed to not let us in if it's under 250?
Every district is setting its own, yes, the state left that discretion up to the individual districts. The city of the area is letting nobody in.
Right, yeah. So, it's up to the district.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board tonight under Board Correspondence and Dialogue?
Andy, this is Tara. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mrs. Pound?
On that same note, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Miller and Mr. Carter if we can have a plan as soon as possible so we can prepare for concessions and any other activities at the field for the sporting events. And then, my second question, well, that was a statement. My question is, would the guidance, not guidance, the resource officer that we have, I've been seeing her, as I take trade of football, out directing the buses. So, we've never had the resource officer out there directing buses, and since there's nobody at the high school, the high schoolers, because that's what they're hired for, I'm assuming, what are they actually working on?
Yeah, and maybe Mr. Miller can jump in here, but typically Officer Knight parked his car there, and he would monitor traffic when the high school students were trying to leave at the same time as the buses.
Yeah, that's exactly what, you know, she's doing what he asked her to, what he, you know, he trained her, is what he does, so that's what she's doing right now, just trying to control the traffic as the as the buses are trying to leave.
Okay, so, is she, from a resource officer perspective, since she is for the high school, what other, like, are we paying them, paying her to do, what are we paying her to do since we don't have any 7 through 12?
Mrs. Pound, the resource officer is for the entire district. The resource officer is not for just the high school. She is for the elementary, middle, and high school, as Officer
Gotcha.
and conducts programming in all three buildings. Most times, there are issues that need the most attention at the high school. But yes, in fact, the resource officer is hired for the entire district, if that might help a little bit.
Andy, am I able to jump in? This is Hillary.
Yes, Mrs. Barboni.
Sure, yes. And also, just to let you know, we just started having our car rider students being dismissed actually to the cars. Instead of the parents coming into the building, we're now having them go to the cars at Seneca and at Wake, so we've been utilizing her in that manner for safety as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Barboni.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Pound?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no for further Board Correspondence and Dialogue, I would just like to remind the board that once we leave this meeting, you have a new link for the executive session, and we will hold the executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting. Saying that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Julie. Nicole, second.
Thank you. Favor.
Hi.
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 Oppose nay. The motion carries. We are adjourned. I would like to thank all of the citizens that joined us this evening as attendees, and I would remind the board, we're going to leave this meeting and log into our executive session. Have a good night, everyone.